Order today is Monday, November twenty-fourth. Special council meeting for the Tallulah City Council. First on the agenda is to pledge allegiance and prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Star heads in prayer. Father God, we come before you today, humbled and honored to come to you in prayer. We thank you for everything that you've done for us, Father. We thank you for your mercy and your grace. We ask you to watch over everyone tonight as we are here with the right words in our mouth, the right thoughts in our head. And as we leave, we ask you to give us traveling grace as we make our way home to our families. Be safe, we pray the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Okay, roll call Gerald.
Wells. Day.
Here.
Harris. Day.
So Day already?
Houston.
Here.
And Scott.
Here.
And we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is public comments on the agenda. Do you have any public comments on the agenda? Councilwoman, do you have any comments on the agenda, sir? I'll give you a moment to each stuff.
No, no, we can't, okay.
Any public comments on the agenda? Next item on the agenda is to approve the high bid for the old aerators at the wastewater treatment plant. We had this on a prior agenda and we had a request to get some more information. So I'm giving you guys an entire packet. On this, the high bidder is the gentleman Henry Quisby out of Dallas, Texas. And his bid was four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. It's like there were about sixty bids in this particular option. That was the final bid. Do you have any questions? There are no questions, or are you saying?
I have some questions. I was trying to give somebody else an opportunity to say something. I looked at those bids. I talked to several individuals who are pretty adept when it comes to computers. And I asked them a question. I said, I let them look at the bid, the bid history and the bid that was turned in, those proposals. And I asked the question, I said, what, what stands out when you look at those bids? And, and the first thing that the individuals told me is they said, you have several individuals on there who has different usernames, but they have the same IP addresses. And, and they said that that should not happen. So you have a C or Rango, you have a Go Bear, one, two, three, four. You have, um, someone, let's see, I wrote it down. You have a M Hubley, a Benny ten, 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 a twenty, two, zero, one, zero, zero. All those are different usernames, but it's using the same IP address. And everyone I talked to said, no computer has the same IP address. No computer has the same IP address. And according to these bids that we're receiving, you have several different usernames, but they're using the same computers. Which makes me think that this is not a legitimate bid process. Because the usernames and IP addresses should not be the same. You have seven different usernames, but they all have the same IP address. And it makes me question whether or not this process is legitimate. And I, I went on to the, uh, the Matt site. And I, I put it in an email that I didn't see those bids nowhere on the site when I looked at it. I looked at, um, the surplus property. I also looked at the one that says, uh, past bids. And, uh, the one that says, new bids. And I put in an email, also takes a picture of it, showing that there was no bid submitted for Tallulah Airway Project. Even I looked up under, uh, the surplus project, I couldn't find. And I know that guy, uh, from the Matt sent those email correspondence. And I looked up under everything that he told us to look up under, I still haven't found. And that's as of this day.
Anyone else have any comments?
For the, for the, for the, for the bidding of this equipment, you, I mean, they are going to cut you a check, question check, because they, they say to you. No exchange until the purchase is actually happened.
Right.
I think you were saying.
She asked whether the check you made up to the city of Tallulah.
We would not use any of this equipment until that actually happens.
And was this bid proposal submitted in the local newspaper?
So this was done on, um, I could have been able to sign gum, but it's for auctions. Yeah, for auctions. So, no, it's not in the, uh, local paper.
And when we go back and we look at the minutes mile meetings, we said that those bids are going to be placed in our local newspaper as part of the bid process. That's just me saying it. But I, I, I checked and I didn't see it anywhere in the paper.
Anyone else have any?
That's scrap metal, why don't you?
Uh, but I think we're overlooking the process because no two computers has the same IP address. And I believe that we're going to do business for the city. I think it should be legitimate.
So this was done through the Matt's. I'm one hundred percent, uh, sure that this was done legitimately, but I completely understand or just accept your, um, your comments. Are there any other comments for me?
We'll see this in one of the Matt's site. Cause I was, I don't know where to look for it.
So I think on the second page of, the third page of the document I gave you, there's a picture of it. Scraped stainless steel aerators, eighteen toll. Says when it closes.
Those are, those are same pictures we took. That we, saying we're gonna say, that's the same picture we used.
No, that's not. I actually took the picture, that is not. Because that's actually cleaned out. When I took the picture, it was a mound. A mound of aerators with grass growing all up in it and everything. Actually, Paul Mr. Holmes came down here and took some photos.
And he cleaned all that out, the same picture?
I don't know, they, it was cleaned out by, um, our guys. They did some work out there as well. Are there any more comments from anyone on the council? Do you have any public comments?
How, how much was it, the bid?
Four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
For eighteen areas?
It was eighteen?
Yes.
So eighteen aerators that could be not, not just recycled for metal, that could be refurbished. And we go with the company that we think is best suited for the city, in our opinion, versus, you know, putting it out in other, other places. And I agree with, with Councilman Wells. There are no, no five, six, uh, IP addresses could be the same. So there has to be some type of, uh, some type of, I hate to say fraudulent, but that's what it seems to be, with, with the same IP address. Unless somebody's sitting in the Matt's office or, or wherever these people are bidding on this particular item to have these same addresses. Now, uh, that's something that needs to go back to the Matts. Uh, to find out, you know, why. I mean, I, I don't see a state agency sending over, um, these bids and not looking into that, you know, into its entirety. Or maybe the Attorney General needs to look at it. Because that, that could be where somebody bids on these projects. And, you know, it could have been a higher bid than the four thousand. Eighteen aerators should be a lot, worth a lot more than four thousand dollars. I mean, I'm sure, I don't know what the prices are of, what they are due, but I'm sure they probably a hundred thousand plus. And to sell scrap metal with, uh, for, for four thousand dollars for eighteen, that's absurd, you know? So that's just my opinion, and I stand by that.
Any other public comments?
I've got one. One of the few we're gonna do, Ed, I did, I said, I'm grieving, but I know those things cost a lot more than four thousand, probably a piece. Even if you went and refurbished them, are you gonna use them?
So.
I don't know, I don't know what it costs to refurbish them. Probably not that expensive. I don't know if there's anybody around here that could refurbish them.
So those, those were the aerators that were in the pond prior to the new aerators that have been put in. I got here, last time I worked for the city in twenty fourteen, and they have been outside in the elements since then.
I think the refurbishment probably, uh, over with. You know, scrap iron, I don't know what they weigh, but it seems like you've got to have a lot of stuff to make any kind of money in scrap iron, from what I've heard about it.
Well, I'm sure, Mr. Mr. Scott, that scrap, with those aerators, they're, they're large enough, that, and the weight of them will outweigh, uh, for, I, I guarantee you, you're probably gonna get a thousand dollars per aerator, even if you, if you scrapped them, because of the, the weight and the head. Now, if it was me, we looking at, we always buying aerators and different things for, for sewer plants, not places. I mean, I, I would look at refurbishing those things versus four thousand dollars pennies. I mean, the city, four thousand dollars, nothing to the city. I mean, it, it, it may, it may make a difference on, on something, but I don't think it's gonna pay a couple people payroll. I mean, four thousand dollars in pennies, when we talking about, you know, the, this type of equipment, when we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars per aerator.
Okay, any other public comments?
This is my last comment. And then my only other concern is the fact that this was a public bid project. The only information we get through the bid process was on one individual. And that's only after we inquire about it not being a private or hidden bidder. And I think one of the excuses the guy said was they didn't want to abuse anybody's personal information out of them. And, and that's ludicrous when it comes to government property, public property. If someone bid on a public project, if all of their information, their names, the company name they're representing, and contact information should be there. And just to give a name, uh, the city from Dallas, Texas, and, uh, the email address of just the highest bidder, it, it, it just makes me think that it's a whole shame of process. Because anytime someone bid on a public project, all of that information for each and every bidder is listed. This is supposed to be public information, not only the highest bidder, but all of the other bidders as well.
Okay, any other public comments?
Okay, you said that these things have been in the water for years.
No, 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 they've been on land.
Been on land.
At the back of the pond.
The only thing you can do is maybe get an idea of what one of them is. Get an idea. So much you got eighteen, eighteen times that time, what are they giving for?
So what they're giving?
An idea, is all I can, I don't, I don't.
And that's something, Mr. Scott, you can, you can, you can actually call Scrap Metal and get a price on what they paying per pound. I don't get that. But I, I, but I think we losing the, the, the process of what Councilman Wells was talking about.
It's a whole focus.
Uh, is the IP address, that's a major issue. Uh, you can't have the same IP address. So there's a flaw in the system somewhere that, you know, it, it, it's, it's not, it ain't right. And, you know, and I would like to look into more detail on those, those email addresses to see, you know, why out of Dallas, so many out of Dallas and not in the surrounding area and everybody around Louisiana have, um, sewer plants. Uh, and they use these aerators. I mean, everybody. Regardless of they been sitting, uh, before they were using the pond, they had to sit. During the time of use, they had to go in the pond. So regardless of whether they're sitting in the pond or out of the pond, it's still an aerator.
Okay.
If they were usable, wouldn't we abuse them? If we could abuse them?
Yes.
Or if they are for refurbished? Can you say something about refurbishing?
Sure.
How would it cost, how much would it cost to refurbish just one?
I can't, I can't, I can't give you an estimate of how much it would cost.
But if they could sell out, if they've been setting out in the elements, the rain, the snow, do you think they're refurbished?
They set, a, a aerator sets out in the element in the rain, in, in snow before they even sold.
But this has been functioning though. These have been functioning.
Well, uh, Councilwoman Houston, okay, let's go back to when, when Mayor Branch did the, the sewer plant. Cause I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that's when the aerators were taken away from the pond, right? So, uh, at that time, we don't know were those aerators working or not at the time? Because what they did, they, they redid the, the sewer plant. So therefore, we don't, we have no idea if they were working. They, they had to be working. Some of them had to be working because the sewer plant was still running. So to go and buy new ones, we spent all those millions of dollars redoing this new plant out there. And it's still in channels. So some of those aerators still working. They're working condition. And to sell those aerators for four thousand dollars is an indictment to the taxpayers' tax dollar.
Okay. Any other public comments?
For the IP address, I thought that, just like this, this company here, our, our agency, more than one computer can apply to one, one IP address. If I'm not mistaken now. I'm just gonna be, it's, yeah, yeah, it can.
No, you can, you can only have one IP address.
It can be for more than one computer. That's what I'm saying, yes, it can. I'm gonna have all, do we?
Okay, okay.
You can only have one IP.
One IP address.
Okay, you guys, we're, we're done with the comments. Everybody is at an opportunity. Is there a motion to approve the bid for the aerators at the wastewater treatment plant? Motion? Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to enter the public hearing, enter, enter the public hearing for the ordinance to approve the municipal budgets for the city of Tallulah for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, what I'd like to do is allow the council, um, to ask any questions that they have, and then they'll open it up to the audience for any questions that you all have. Councilwoman Wells, if you'd like to go first, since you're on the budget committee?
I, I would, I would give some rest opportunity for us, but I may be a while.
Okay, I just got mine with that, so I have some questions, so. Scott? Say.
Just want to go for, sir.
Okay, oh. First and foremost, who prepared this budget?
I did, basically.
Okay, cause, um, according to Louisiana Revise Statute thirty-nine, thirteen oh five, we have a budget message that's included in the budget. And if you prepared it, your signature be on here. So there's no signature statement, who prepared this budget? If there's a budget statement, there should be a signature of who it prepared. You prepared it by yourself?
Yeah.
Okay, so then that means your signature should be on this budget message. Which means that you're responsible for everything that this budget entails.
So there's no rule that says on the budget message that anyone has to sign that?
This is, I disagree with you. I'm glad to picture it. According to Revise Statute thirty-nine, thirteen oh five, it says, "If the budget sets forth proposed financial plan for the general fund and each special revenue fund, the budget must include the following. A budget message, it's underlined, that is signed by the budget preparer and that contains." So that's law. Revise Statute thirty-nine, thirteen oh five, it says it must be signed by the budget preparer. If you look around, I'm telling you, it's, it's right here, only thing you think. For Revise Statute thirty, the first thing it says, what must be the budget include? It said a budget message, the first one. And it says it must be signed by the preparer. So Mr. Oden, if you prepared the budget by yourself, then your name has to go on this budget message. First and foremost, that's by law. It can't be a blank statement. There's one thing that we did wrong. Then also, um, you, you got Mrs. Thompson here. Are all the funds that's available to the city of Tallulah included in this budget?
What do you mean, all funds?
The last time you said that, uh, only thing we had to put in the budget was that, um, uh, we, we only put a line of statement saying that all available for, whatever funds that are available for the city of Tallulah, and for the budget not being there. So are, are all funds missing in this budget?
The amount's available for appropriations, yes.
So everything is there. So how much is the total budget?
That, you need to.
I'm just asking for.
I'm making the total budget.
For the fund, it's about three point.
The general fund, it's, um,
Three point four million?
Five, yeah, five point three million per funds available and our charges to appropriation on the top page.
You mean three point five, you said nine point three.
Five point three, what's available for appropriations.
Right.
Total charges, what we're saying, we're gonna spend in our budget is about three point five. So after, if we stay within this budget at the end of the year, we should have one point nine, um, budgetary fund balance at the end of the year.
Okay, where, where we getting the five point three from this?
Oh, and excuse me, I am so sorry. I'm ringing from the wrong column. That's last year's budget, we need this year's budget. Amounts available is five point five. What we're spending is three point seven for ending at three point eight million.
Okay, so where we getting the five point, maybe, where the five million comes from?
At the top, right there, twenty thousand proposed budgets, the budgetary beginning fund balance. Cause what revenues we're projecting ends up to be five point five.
So you said at the beginning of the year, we had one million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars, nothing from last year's budget?
Yes.
So I mean, you're.
Not last year's budget, that's what we have available for appropriations.
Okay, so, so could that money be used to offset any deficit that we had last year?
What do you mean deficit we had last year?
Any, any type of expenses, you said that money's available. So we face financial hardships. Could any of that money be used to help the city stay afloat?
Well, that is the money for the city. I mean, it is the city's money.
Okay, so, so we just want to ask you because last year around, was it April or May, maybe March, April or May, we said, let's say the city was about to go broke.
We said that the water and sewer funds were in trouble.
No, 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 we, we said.
It's, we were talking about the issue that was raising on hardships on the general fund based on the water funds and the, and the amounts of the strain that the water fund and sewers having. At that same time, we were not getting any customer, um, customer fees
Right.
for water or sewer because Magnolia wasn't charging water and sewer is depending on water fees.
So, so at that time, were the city facing a financial crisis, yes or no?
I think the city's still facing a financial crisis, if you wanna know the truth.
Okay, let me go back.
Say that again?
I mean.
No, say that again?
I said, I think the city has the potential for a financial crisis.
No, no, you said the city is still. Well, she's, she's a, she's a CPA. Thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Oden.
Well, and also, you know, we're guarding closely the spending this one around here, and it's beginning to show. And my hope is that at some point in the future, all of this money, or at least part of the money that we gave the water company to operate with and pay salaries, that we can get that money back little by little, and it will put, uh, uh, general fund back on its, back on its feet. And it will also, uh, give, uh, the water company a, a better, uh, idea of, of what should be going on.
Well, well, my, my question, I, I believe in seeing things in bright. When you said last year we had one million, eight hundred some thousand dollars, where did that money come from? What, what accounts are there?
You mean what accounts there?
Yeah, yeah, there's enough money, that's what you said, one million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred two dollars that was there at the beginning of the year.
I think the first thing that needs to happen is, we need to understand what a budgetary fund balance is.
That's what I'm thinking.
It's the, it's the, the remaining equity from the last year's operations.
Is it all?
It's accumulation.
Is it all cash?
No, it's not all cash.
What else, what does it all entail? If we did not put it down?
Well, this comes, some of it's in receivables, and some of it is actually due from the water fund.
What's made it from the water fund?
Well, it's the amount of money that the water fund owes the general fund.
That the water fund owes the general fund?
Yes, so last year, when we talked about, we were facing the financial challenge, okay? That's because.
That's what happened to our next year.
That's because general fund was, uh,
supplementing the water.
I get it, I know.
And so that money, water still owes general fund that money.
So we, so, so you, how much money does water owe general funds? Now, how much money?
Eight hundred fifty thousand dollars.
How much money does Magnolia owe the city of Tallulah?
Now, that I can't tell you.
Well, Magnolia has the water money, so that, that means.
Well, we, because then we don't know what they're taking in or what they're spending.
Okay, so how can we say how much you are?
Let, let, let's make sure.
You shouldn't.
Hold on just one second, okay?
You shouldn't even be interrupting.
Okay, you should not be interrupting. Okay, all right, so let me, let, let me say what I'm going to say then. I'm going to give the floor back to Councilman Wells, okay?
See, this part of the problem, Al Lewis, see, see, you always wanna interject when someone else is talking. But you never wanna interject when you're talking. So like I was saying, if we don't know how much money Magnolia owes the city of Tallulah, how can we include that?
I don't think Magnolia's gonna owe the city of Tallulah anything.
Well, you just said the money that water, water owes.
The water fund that the city owns, the city operates.
Yeah, so we, we don't operate water. We're not operating water, it's a national favor.
But you still have expenses related to water, even though you're not operating, you still do.
So my question still remains. Because Magnolia is the one that's in charge of our, our water company and our water funds.
I have not seen the financial statements except for what was given to me at June thirtieth. And were marked, um,
There was some billing in March or February.
Well, March was just the very, the minimum.
Let, let, let's not get lost on, on, on the, the stuff y'all trying to do. I wanna come back.
It's only being Magnolia, I had no idea.
I wanna come back to what you said.
I had no idea about that.
I understand. I wanna come back to what you said. You said that the budgetary fund balances is a result of receivables, and you mentioned that how much money water owes general funds?
Yes.
So how much money does water owe general funds?
I'd have to get a financial statement, I don't have one with me.
Okay, so I could say my guess.
And I think it's about seven hundred thousand dollars at June thirtieth.
I would say eight fifty, but I could be wrong.
Well, it depends on what time period that you're talking about. But this is as of June thirtieth?
No.
So probably, I can't remember, I'd have to, since I'm.
Okay. We gotta stop all this fluffing. Well, I'm, I believe in dealing with directness. So now, if you do not know how much money is actually owed, how can we put out a million and eight hundred some thousand dollar fee?
Cause that's what the financial reports are gonna reflect when the, the audited financial reports is gonna reflect. The one point eight for the two thousand and four budget, that beginning, that's audited financial amount, numbers. Those are audited.
We're in public here, this, we are in public here. Should we open it? Should we open it? See, that, that's why I, I believe in us putting things in writing. So when you try to get the explaining, and you say, well, I don't have it in front of me, that's where I have a problem in. And you say we have five million dollars at our disposal. And, and you can't explain what the. And then when I ask you where this other money comes from, you say you don't really know how much it's actually supposed to be? So on this, oh, can you tell us what, one week, hours two, where it comes from? Or, may I lose, is somebody there with additional money that's coming from?
Report what comes from.
It's, it's the amount of cash that the city has. It is the amount.
So how much cash does the city have that is supposed to?
I'd have to go and look at, at financial statements for June, and I did not read that.
See, that, that, that's why on the budget, it should say, and that's what I was talking about when I was on the budget committee. It should say we have cash at a certain amount.
No, it doesn't. That's not required of the budget. The budget says.
Okay, can you hold it for me, please? What I'm saying, as the budget person on the budget committee, if there's something we want to be included in a budget, you, you don't have the authority to say it doesn't have to be there. If a council person that's on this budget committee said he wanted that information on there, then that should be included.
We've had many opportunities to ask for that information, and I.
I, I asked for, I, I asked for on several occasions, and on, now Lewis knows that, um, Gerald Olden knows that, and this entire council knows that. Matter of fact, I asked you. I said, how much money is available to the city, and, and it should have on there?
I've prepared that to, that it shows it on there now.
And we should have, we should have something that says we have X amount of dollars on cash at hand. You say cash, receivables, how much do we have in receivables?
Can I go print it up?
Sure, no. Did you print it up?
No, not that.
Why not?
Why not?
If we're discussing a budget that you're saying.
Exactly.
You don't have to ask the council.
No, 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 no. The council, as a budget, as a budget chairperson.
Mr. Wilson.
As a budget chairperson, I want to see that.
Mr. Wilson.
I want to be quiet, cause I wanna make you an object. I wanna make you an attention. On another shift. I, I think as a budget person, as for the city councilman, I think we should see how much cash on hand. I think we should maybe see how much there's in receivables. You know, you made a statement saying the city is doing well.
Well, it's, it's, it's okay. It, it's that. Then it's less selling your payables.
Okay, so can we?
I mean, it's not, it's just not, that's the accumulation. It's one number at the bottom. It's accumulation of all of the results of the operations in past years.
Well, why, why not put that in your budget?
It is in the budget. It's in that number. It's in that number.
I know. See, there's a lot that's in numbers that's not in writing. And what I'm saying is, with, with us having financial situations, I ask for all of the available resources.
So in the budget.
Finish. I ask for all, and I put it in writing. I ask for all monies that we had, bank accounts that was available, that's cash. I ask for all available finances, whether it's grants, receivables, surpluses, whatever it was, I ask for all of that. Have not received it to this day. So when you come all of a sudden now and say we have five million dollars in a budget, and it's not in writing, I don't believe it.
Well, a, a budget is mainly improving revenues and expenditures. And the, and you stay, and those expenditures are staying within your amounts available, and that's what we show you.
So is cash not considered, uh, expend, is cash not ex, uh, considered revenue?
No.
Is that sort of money that you, is that available for you?
No.
So cash is not available?
Cash is not revenue.
Cash is not considered money that's available to be spent?
It's available to be spent, and it's in that one point eight million.
I, I understand. So, we don't list how much cash we have on hand?
In a budget, the budget says revenues and expenditures.
And I've asked for all of the monies that was available to the city, all of them. And then you say it's in the budget, but it should be spelled out.
No, it doesn't have to be spelled out.
I know you said it doesn't have to be. I'm saying what I requested. And, and see, that's what, that's what happens so much. We say what's not, what does not have to be in there. And that's how you all stayed around a whole lot of foolishness, because y'all say since it does have to be there, it's not there. Like, and when Matt Lewis said, it doesn't have to have a city's own budget missing, and it all said it does. So, so I'm not gonna stay on that too long, but let's get to, when you look at, um, it says we have other local revenues that, that's there under the budgetary fund balances beginning, resource inflows. What are the other local revenues that we're talking about? See, what needs to be in writing? You know, we guess. You can't remember, right?
I'm trying to remember exactly what other revenues are. A lot of it is like, we get a, um.
That's what I said.
Under, uh, under resources where it says other local revenues, what is that line item?
It's.
I would have to re, I would have, would have to refer to my notes or.
It's, um.
You know, there's a lot of materials that flows right here. Over a long period of time, and a lot of this detail.
It's like gas inspections, um. You know, those are licensing permits. It's miscellaneous income.
What would be, what would be miscellaneous income?
Um, just. What do you get miscellaneous? We get like LWCC.
Yeah, we get that. That's basically what it is. It's a profit sharing payment.
But who, who is sharing it?
The LWCC is sharing its profits.
It's, it's, I mean, it's all, it's kinda like the, it's the blast bucket of all the things that are not shown. And so, but it'll total up to the, the amount that's in this individual book. It's shown on these individual pages.
So the checks that we would get from LWCC, that's the line item where we would put that revenue?
Yes, yes. Lot cleaning.
So okay, we got avaloras, lot cleaning. We charged for that?
Huh.
We charged for lot cleanings, then they'll come forward, council will set a fee for it, and the council will set fees. So avalora fire protection. So last year, we budgeted two hundred and forty thousand. This year, we had a decrease, as we're saying a hundred and ten thousand. What caused that decrease?
I, I'll tell you, because I got misinformed. I thought when an election passed, that they were, that they would double what was already outstanding for, for that, and I went ahead and put it in the budget, only to find out later that no, it was just a renewal, and I was not led to believe that it was gonna be a renewal. So that's how that happened.
I ain't had insurance of my own. I got a lot of it. Young man, not one.
I don't understand what you're saying. I, I didn't understand. And then it said transfers from other funds, twelve thousand dollars. Where we transferred?
That's just tourism. That's tourism, basically.
What do you mean by that, Gerald? What do you mean by that, Gerald?
What?
Explain tourism.
Well, that would have to do with Christmas time, you know, and spending money on things that we, that the town does for Christmas, and also, uh, well, I think that's basically it, really. That's what it encompasses, basically.
We're not budgeting anything this year for that.
Oh, yeah, you are.
Oh, wait.
Well, we didn't, because, you know, it's not funded. It's not funded, so.
So, we, we got some things that we say we're spending for.
It's funded by general funds. So in other words, if it had been funded like it was years ago by the state, then we wouldn't have it in that situation.
We got some things that we're saying we're gonna use tourism funds for, and then we go to charges to appropriation outflows. Says general and administrative. Last year, we did seven hundred and ninety-two thousand. What, what is the general administrative? What is that?
Mayor's office.
Mayor's office?
It's all the expenses listed on the mayor's office pages.
Okay, now, it, it goes from seven hundred and ninety-two thousand to nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. What, what are we doing in the mayor's office that has caused an increase of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and ten dollars?
Vehicle, vehicle purchase.
What, what vehicle we purchased?
Well, we.
For the mayor's office?
Well, no, that's true, not for the mayor's office. I'll have to put those.
Insurance, open insurance.
That, that's not gonna be, that, that's not gonna be a question.
Well, it's, it's, it's part of it, plus, um.
It, it calls for putting each one down side by side and, and comparing the.
And, and that's what it's supposed to be.
And some of them, you know, some, you may have quite a few in this area and not very many in that area.
And that's a fifteen percent change from one year to the next, and gen, and I, I'm quite sure there's some salaries in that too. That's not insurance, but we will see, I guarantee you.
No.
Oh, then, and, and we said community center. The community center last year was a hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And this year was budgeted a hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. So, wha, what, what type of expenses are we doing at the community center?
The LW, the LW plan?
Well, there's stuff to repair down there.
No, I, that's what it was.
No, 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 that's, that's listed under, under expenses, so it's.
That's what he's talking about, the increase in community center expenses, right?
Yeah.
So, I, I, but this, this thing is, this thing is, this thing is coordinated, man. This is, this is coordinated. You're looking at Mayor Lewis.
That because she, I mean, I'm just double confirming, we increased the budget for.
Okay, so you said we increased?
Well.
So why is, but who, your name should, who, who all played a part in preparing this budget, is that what?
Mr. Olden did.
Who all, who's going, who all played a part in preparing this budget? Because this gonna be an issue. And right now, you're saying you're the only one that did it.
No, we're saying you did it.
I, 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 no, man.
You're the one who did it.
You will not, you will not say I did it, because I ain't played no part in it. Cause everything I asked for, you talking about that, I never got it.
Say that again.
So, so I never got you. You not giving me a number. So I'm asking Mr. Olden, and I'm for leaving it. I've got a couple, couple, couple more questions. Who all prepared this budget?
You. What do you have at that?
What if, they said, oh, 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 no, 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 stop, 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 stop. One thing we're not gonna do right now is play. We're not gonna play games. I haven't participated, not one iota, in this budget being prepared. So we're not gonna joke and say I did it, from you, Ms. Thompson, nor from you, Mr. Olden. I did not participate, cause nothing I asked for was given to me. So from this point forward, don't say I did it, because I did not.
Did you play a role in it in any way?
No, I did not.
Did you do anything at all?
Mr. Olden.
I think you did.
Mr. Olden.
Because every time I ask you for something.
You got an answer.
You never gave me documentation.
You never, I, I gave you what you asked for.
They don't tell that story.
I gave you what you asked for.
So now, again, remember, maybe we came here, you said you prepared the budget outside of me and his Harris. So if we have to go to court.
Well, you're always talking about going to court.
Mr. Olden.
So again.
Mr. Olden.
It's okay, I, I, yeah.
He's, he's asking you a question, okay?
So, Mr. Olden, are you going on record that you prepared this budget by yourself?
Well, I had input from other people. That is part of it.
Okay, so now.
So, so I can't really say that I did it by myself.
So, so the final budget, cause Mayor, Mayor Lewis said in a meeting that she micromanaged it.
No, what I said I micromanaged was the, the publications and the process. That's what I micromanaged.
I said you micromanaged the budget. Okay, so again, so, Mr. Olden, are you gonna be the one that's gonna sign saying you prepared this budget?
I didn't say that in that paragraph. I, I, I impaired the, I repaired the, I did the budget with input from different people, like the managers, what they expected, what they wanted to see themselves looking like a year now, things like that, interviewing managers.
That, that, that's not what I'm saying. The, of course, in the budget, you get, uh, communication from the managers. What I'm saying is, after the managers gave you their input, are you the sole preparer of the entire budget?
With the managers' input, yes. Listen, with the in, the managers' input, yes.
Okay, so, okay, with the manager's input, so these numbers are put together by you, right? And you own it?
With the help of the, of the managers, because they gave me that something.
The managers, the, the managers are not gonna be the one responsible.
We can argue on this all night. I'm telling you now.
I'm gonna get to it. I'm keep moving. I gotta make sure we, we know who, who's responsible. And, and, um, when I go to, where is that? I'm gonna go to the community center. We're talking about tours and everything of that sort. I wanna go to the community center when it comes to the budget. I'm gonna make sure I have my questions together when I finish. So you know, say I played a part in, um, putting this project together, but I did it. Now, on the community center, it says salaries. Who is getting paid salary for the community center? Because, Mr., I saw Mr. Jackson, and, uh, I, I, he's not there no more.
That's during this time that you're looking at, he was.
No, no, I'm looking at twenty twenty-six for the budget this year. It has a salary for twenty-nine, five, fifteen. Who's getting that salary? Because the, the person that formerly worked there no longer works there.
So this is a projected budget that's for the person that will be hired. That's the salary that they will receive.
Okay, so when are we gonna, uh, hire someone for the community center? Who, who's managing the community center now?
I am.
Okay, so there's no one out there?
No. I mean, we have our street crew going in, cleaning up, and doing all sorts of things, so.
Okay, okay. So that's gonna be the salary for the, the person for the community center. So when, when the former person that ran the community center was there, was, was no longer employed there, what did that money go for his sal, that person's salary?
It stayed in the budget. It wasn't spent. There was nobody to pay it.
Then the mayor's office, you, you're a mayor's assistant position. Is that money still there for the mayor's, for the mayor's assistant?
My, my salary that I used to get.
There your former, your former position?
Yes, that position has happened, so those funds are still there. When they were already, they were put into the budget.
Okay, gotcha, all right. So for recreation, it says engineering services for recreation. What engineering services are we doing for recreation?
The recreation on this budget is basically for the, uh, community center.
What, what engineering services? Cause you have engineering services up here. So what engineering services are we doing on a monthly basis at the community center?
What does the line item mean, under recreation?
Well, I just, it was gonna be fifteen grand, and I just split it out thirteen across, because I didn't know when the fifteen grand would be spent. Single.
So, so you say it's engineering services. So what type of engineering services?
Well, I guess at the time, I was told that's what it would be. Yeah, I, I think the people that were involved were gonna be engineers.
Involved in what?
No. What is the line item for, Gerald? You're looking at the recreation.
Fifteen, fifteen dollars.
Twenty-four.
Okay.
I think it's for the, the amount we own for the park. Or do we agree to pay for the park?
Oh, no, that was.
Is that where you put that?
No. I mean, that's the way the amount line item is.
No.
No.
Because we use our COVID money.
In other words, there's always a problem with, with, uh, recreation. You have people who want it, but if you make it available, it suddenly shuts up. And then, uh, I thought, well, this is some money that I had promised them before, or at least had mentioned it before. It was not used, so I thought I would just put it back in. I don't know what month it'll be used, so I just split it out at thirteen thousand a month. For twelve months, that'd be fifteen thousand dollars.
I think, I think the, uh, question that Councilman Wells has is the, the line, the name of the line item. And if it says engineering services, then he's asking you, what are the engineering services?
Well, that was parked up there.
What are the engineering services?
I'm not a contractor.
My God.
You don't know that, man? What do you mean, what, uh, engineering services? How does that make me look like a, someone that doesn't know what they're talking about?
You talking about what project you're gonna have engineering services for?
Well.
Okay, so.
A line item in case?
Is it, if I remember it correctly, is this the fifteen thousand dollars that we were going to use for the park project?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then what's wrong with that? What have I done wrong?
No, 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 we're just asking. So is that why you listed it as engineering services?
I'm sure it has something to do with it.
Okay, because on that park project. Hold on just one second, okay? If I remember correctly, on the park project, that was.
Last year.
No, that's not what I'm thinking of.
Three years ago.
I don't know. I'm trying to remember how we paid everything, so it was. I'm trying to remember, we paid the engineering out of pocket, out of local funds, and I believe that's what that was. So is that, no, no, we did not pay fifteen thousand dollars out of ARPA for the park. We absolutely one hundred percent did not. However, we did have fifteen thousand dollars that we were going to pay extra for the park. I think you should remember that very clearly. You were against that. That's paid out of local funds. Gerald, my understanding, that's where you have put this money?
Yes.
That, that's a good way to lead him toward the answer.
Right. Well, that's what I really, nobody's letting, I've got my own mind.
But what happened, what happened was, with the park projects, those was paid in last year's budget.
No, we're still paying. We still have some days that we're paying now.
No, no.
We've had payments, we've had payments since July, since June, probably, for the park project.
It should be. If we're paying something extra for the park, it's not, it's not come by the council. Because last year's budget, when we voted to accept that bid for that project, we financed that seventeen thousand. It was seventeen thousand.
No, it's fifteen thousand. And we say it very clearly that it'll be in the next fiscal year.
Do, do we remember when we approved that project? It was in two thousand twenty-four. And that was financed in this past year's budget, twenty twenty-five. Because it was approved back in, we started back in April of twenty twenty-four. And we're gonna have a meeting at the community center in Ju, June or July of twenty twenty-four, when you are voted to approve it. That project. And so it came into the twenty-five budget. So that fifteen thousand is my engineering services for no park project. That's not it.
Well, it's for the pri, the park project, whatever you want.
Okay, they, they just didn't answer, but it's okay. Now, we go to section eight. And I have to question again. Who is the accountant for section eight?
I'm sorry, Angela.
Who is the accountant for section eight? Who is the accountant for section eight?
Cindy, you the accountant for section eight?
Not all of the county, Trish, Trish, um, Haymaker, she does the HUD for the park, so section eight.
What's her name?
Trish, um, Haymaker. But, you know, they're, they're required to submit, um, monthly reports and yearly reports to HUD. And she, she's the person that helps with the HUD.
Okay, so that's the Allegra Williamson as well?
No.
Well, who was that throwing in? Who was the one you're talking about?
Trish Haymaker.
Who, who she works for?
Ursula.
It said the city of Tallulah, section eight.
Oh, that is the money that section eight pays to the general.
Okay, so.
And it goes in general fund.
So who is the accountant for section?
The city of Tallulah.
The city of Tallulah is the council?
The, the general and administrative, um, department of the city of Tallulah, they print the checks, they pay for, um, Miranda's salary, and, um, in, in any type of accounting type expenses they pay.
Okay, so the city of Tallulah pays itself thirty thousand dollars? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's twenty-four thousand.
That the city of Tallulah pays itself?
Well, section eight pays.
Eight, yeah.
The general fund.
So who, who does that money go to when it goes to general funds? Because that says it's an expense.
It just goes into general fund operations.
It says it's an expense, which means it's going out somewhere to somebody.
It's going out from section eight into the general fund.
No. Coming in would be revenue.
Right.
It's going outside accounting. So that means somebody is being paid that amount of money.
Those checks are written to the general fund and deposited into the general fund checking account. Because that's federal dollars. That's being paid through federal dollars. And the city gets an administration fee to help with the county fees and administrative fees for administrative fee, um, the voucher program. So the city of Tallulah charges section eight two thousand dollars a month to go toward Vanessa's salary, the mayor's salary, Gerald's salary.
Miranda's salary.
Miranda's salary, yeah, because section eight does not pay Miranda. General fund pays Miranda.
You say section eight paying, paying the mayor's salary?
Miranda.
She says the mayor's.
The mayor's budget, it goes into, you know, it's revenues for the mayor's budget. The mayor's office.
That's even.
No, it's not. It is, it is earmarked for administration, and administration is done through the general fund.
So, Mr. Wells still has the floor.
I'm listening to the answer, John, if that's not sufficient, you know, because in, in a corporation, it has to go to somebody. And, and this year's section eight is separate, is a separate special revenue. So that means it's not.
Comes from HUD.
So it's not going to the general fund. It should not be going to the general fund. It's a special revenue fund.
The administration for that fund goes to the voucher. And, and it's.
Okay.
Purposely legal.
Okay, so my understanding, that federal, federal money coming in.
And you get special money for administration from HUD. It's called admin, HAP administration. Then you get HAP, which is strictly restricted for rent payments and utility payments. Those cannot be spent for anything else. But the administration is for the administration, and the city charges section eight two thousand dollars a month to pay for its expenses, because it buys the checks, you know, it buys, it pays for Vanessa to print all the checks.
So that money is federal money that comes in, and what's paid to general fund is paid from those federal funds?
Yes, to the general fund for the administrator.
So why say accountant? Why, why, why you, why you list it?
I mean, that's just, it's just called accounting fees.
See, see, federal government, very specific.
Correct.
Very specific. And, and so when it says accounting, you wouldn't, federal money is not gonna, the federal government is not gonna pay money to its own source, to its own department, and then that department pays money out to somebody else. The Fed don't do that. When the federal government sends money to a government entity, it sends it directly to that entity. So when federal, when the federal government is funding section eight, that money is going to section eight.
Yes, going to section eight. If section eight is paying general fund for administration services.
You, you, section eight, you're not gonna be the mixed federal money like that.
It's not mixing federal.
If, if, see, see, if, if it was going to general funds, it would have something called transfers.
No, because we're actually paying, we're not transferring your money.
They said section eight is paying general funds.
But it's not a transfer, it's an expense, it's an expense to section eight.
So why is it not saying that on here? Why is it not saying that anywhere in general fund, but section eight is paying general fund?
It does.
Where? Where's it said it at? Please, everywhere. Because I looked around, but honestly, no one in section eight is paying general fund anything. That's, that's not, you're not gonna find it. Show me what section.
Accounting fees.
No, 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 no.
On the second page.
Show, show me what section eight.
It's included in accounting fees for that seventy-eight thousand dollars, because the general fund also charges water and sewer two thousand dollars a month to pay for the cost of administration fees, because Vanessa and, you know, Gerald and all of them still do the payroll and process payroll checks, that's to help cover that cost that the general fund incurs.
This, this is the problem, I need you to say it, okay? Because when we ask them, what are the accounting, who we paying for accounting? When I ask the mayor's office accounting services, you know what they said it goes to? You know what they said it goes to? You. They said it goes to you.
No, that's not, this is revenue.
Oh, this is what I'm saying.
This is revenue.
You said, you said the money, you, you said we go to general funds, right? You said the seven eight thousand for accounting services for general funds. You said that's what section eight paying in. When I asked them who the accounting fees goes to, they said it's you.
Well, that would probably be in the expense section called accounting services. And some, two different things.
I don't think that's his accounting fees. Can you show me accounting services under the general funds?
Yeah, it's, um, page three.
You got accounting services, that's right there for fifty-nine thousand.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-nine, three.
Fifty-three, not, oh, well.
Yeah, fifty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty.
Yeah, that, that would be mine plus the repay main company, and I think sometimes you put in, um.
Because last year, we paid you about sixty-some thousand.
Just not me is in that accounting services.
E- 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 every time, see, I just found out my main company, we was paying them last, last meeting. See, I, I didn't know they was even on payroll to the last meeting, but we got a letter saying they're not gonna provide services for us. See, that, that's why I said there's things that we're paying out that I'm, I'm not aware of. So when you say we got accounting services, that section eight is paying the general fund, when I asked them who's the accountant, Mr. Oldham said he was last meeting. Then, uh, Mayor Lewis said you were accountant. Now, you just said somebody named Pam is an accountant. Or Patricia, who you said Pam or Patricia? Who'd you say?
Trish.
Trish, Trish.
She, I didn't say that she was the accountant for section eight. She is a, I guess she would be more technically, she's a consultant, but she does the, the HUD.
Administration?
Yeah. I mean, it's all tomato, tomato. She's the one that does the, um, the VMS and the, um, FDS part for HUD.
See, see, this, this financial stuff is so tangled. I'm finding out about people we paying that we have no clue about. I, I have no clue about. This person named Trish, that we paying to do accounting.
No, 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 she made it clear that we do not pay this Haymaker. Am I correct? Did I hear you say that?
Section eight pays her.
But not, not considered to move, section eight does.
So who, who, who does section eight get that money? Do they send a check to Trish?
Yes.
Is it in section eight?
Yes.
So section eight pays Trish directly?
Yes.
Okay. So why, why is that in the city of Tallulah's funds then?
Water and, the water and.
It's, it's, what do you mean?
If, if, if section eight is paying Trish, then why is it under city of Tallulah's finances? They're, they're an expense for us.
Well, it is under the section eight program.
Where, where else would you pay?
So, so, does the money comes out of Tallulah for the section eight funds to pay this Trish money?
Yes.
So that means the city of.
The city of, section eight program. The city of Tallulah's section eight program.
But it has to be listed in the budget, and what, what, what Councilman Wells is saying is not listed in the budget, and you just made a statement that water pays accounting fees and section eight pays accounting fees, and both of them pay two thousand dollars per month, which come up to about forty-eight thousand, and plus your salary, that's over ninety thousand dollars, and the budget doesn't reflect the ninety thousand dollars that you're saying.
This is revenues to the general fund.
Yes, but it doesn't reflect, you only have seventy thousand, not ninety some thousand.
Okay.
Wow, where do we go now?
Councilman Wells, do you have more, so that we can go and make sure that we have the opportunity to allow the, uh, the audience to ask any questions?
It, it, it's just amazing. How we are getting a lot of lip service from outside entities about the city's finances that we don't have at our disposal. And I need to, we need to know who all is being paid through any department from the city of Tallulah. I wasn't aware that we was paying main company. Now I see why you all want to sow bills of payment. Because there's people on our payroll that, that I as a council person don't know a thing about. And, and, uh, did you know about this Trish woman working?
I knew that someone had to be paying, paid for the services.
Did you know this Trish woman was on it? Is this, are you aware of this?
Not in name, no, not in name, but as you just said, someone has to be telling me.
You, you just found that out tonight, because you.
Not in name, then I just said, I just admitted it, I didn't know in name.
Scott, were you aware of this person?
I was not.
So, so, you.
And I think she charges the city fifty dollars a month.
It's really expensive, yeah.
And this is why, this, this, listen, and, and this is what's, that's alarming. This is what's alarming. And that's how I think we just found this out. Because when I asked this question at the last meeting, none of you all had an answer. Nobody had an answer. Now, all of a sudden, tonight, you all saying y'all knew somebody was doing it. Which lets me know it's bull crap. Because when I first asked the question at the last meeting, none of y'all had a clue. So tonight, everybody's saying, I knew it had to be somebody, which doesn't know y'all talked about it.
No, we didn't.
Had to.
Okay.
Because there's no way we can all of a sudden, tonight, know an answer that we didn't know two weeks ago. No way possible.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go to, uh.
Madam Mayor, can I say something about my budget, please? Okay, I just want to give some clarity on the, uh, medical insurance. Uh, C C is here that, uh, you know, we budget for eleven thousand, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. And looking at the other medical insurance throughout the city, it's tremendously high for my department. And I want to get, can I get some clarity about that?
So, Gerald, under police for medical insurance, is this the year that?
That was based on the number of people that have it and the cost of it.
Right.
And it's very expensive, chief.
I think what happened is, um, last year, you only had three.
We only had one or two back there, and this year, they all joined it, or, or, if not all, then basically all. And that shot the amount of money way up.
Okay, so what is the monthly payment?
That we pay for the employees?
Yeah, what is the monthly payment that you guys pay for the employees?
It comes from general fund.
No, no, I'm just asking how much it is. I think it's a hundred and twenty dollars per employee per month that we pay.
It's almost about six dollars.
How much?
It's eleven, about eleven hundred.
A month per person. For one person?
Yeah, that we pay for them.
Okay, eleven hundred dollars a month for each employee?
And the employee is only paying.
I'm not, that's not the exact amount, but it's around that amount.
You knew it's a thousand dollars more.
I know it's more than a thousand dollars.
And it's something else that went up drastically because of that.
It went up over ten percent per person. We paid like nine hundred and fifty dollars last year.
So, so what do the employee pay each?
Employee pays six.
Sixty, that's right, sixty dollars per pay period.
Per pay period, sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Well, sixty-five. And there's eight employees in it, correct?
Say that again?
There's eight employees in the medical insurance, correct?
I'd have to, to work, I don't remember exactly.
I don't know, I was just curious, and I know that's a little high. I was looking at all the other medical insurance, and I know some department have way more than I do. And I mean, I was just curious about that.
Your department participates.
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, do we have any, um?
Man, I, I, I had a couple of other questions, you know, but you tried to look away from me. You know, uh, who's the consultant in the computer consultants for section eight? You know, we have a lot of computer consultants for every department. So who was the computer consultant for section eight?
So that is their SACS program, that's the computer, uh, software and consultant that they use. It's called, um, I think it's S A C S, SACS. It's the, um, the consultant and the computer software that they use every month, that they use all year.
So, so we, we're using a consultant every month?
We're using software, their software. That's how much, you know, we're charged to use their software.
So, so who's the consultant then? So the consultant is separate from the computer consultant? Because it says consultant, which means it's per, a person. Software would say software, and maybe I, I don't understand. But if it was software, say software, consultant is usually an individual. If I'm, if I'm, I'm fairly certain that a computer consultant would be an individual that you can call when they come by. And software is a disk or a program that you put into the computer.
I think they're both listed, maybe not by the line item that you would like them to be, but that's what they are. That's the consultant and, you know, and the computer consultant.
Well, that's, that's lady in Dallas.
Right.
Isn't that who it is? Yes.
It's part of it, but not all of it.
So, so who, who is the lady that y'all keep saying?
Trish Haymaker. Well, that's the computer consultant, but they're all go into that consultant line, I think.
So wait, wait a minute. So Trish Haymaker getting paid thirty thousand for accounting, and then getting twenty-four hundred as a computer consultant, and then getting another twenty-four hundred as a consultant? Trish Haymaker should be a full-time employee.
The accounting is the city of Tallulah, so that's reflected in the twenty-five hundred dollars that we're, um, um. But no, Trish is not in that accounting fee, that's the city of Tallulah. And that says twenty-five hundred, because that's because of the discussion.
And if I'm, uh, uh, understanding correctly, this is what's projected, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not actually.
Yes.
A budget's always a projection, but it has to be as close as possible to what's gonna happen. So let us be careful when we say words. So these projections, if it's not right, can get us in trouble. And if it's over budgeted, it makes it look bad we don't have the money, right? So even though we saying a projection, we trying to be as close as possible to the actual expense, right, or, or revenue, right? Yeah, so it's not just a projection. So we're paying this lady Trish thirty thousand?
No, we're not paying Trish thirty thousand.
You said she was the accountant?
The accounting line is this amount we're paying. The accounting line is this amount we've been to the City of Tallulah.
And they have to pay somebody, right?
Um, they do, I guess, they pay the salaries and.
When the money comes in from, uh, from the government, that starts the whole process, you know, you gotta take the money and make her H A P payments.
So.
And pay her operating expenses, and it all comes from that money? So what's your problem?
So, so, when we can send it, what do we, when we can send it, our sixty thousand? She gets sixty thousand. So we can send her sixty thousand, what do we label it, what's the line item?
Consultant, accounting consultant.
Right.
I would call it that. Consultant.
Accountant, that's right, right.
So, under Section eight, the money comes in from the federal government, okay, it comes into Section eight. Then Section eight pays the City of Tallulah for their accounting.
Correct.
And that's why that's listed under expenditure, right?
Yes.
So, so who, who pays our Section eight director salary?
General fund.
So, that's not a Section eight funding? That doesn't come from Section eight?
It comes, it comes through that accounting line, from accounting money.
From, from, from the.
How, how, how?
No, I'm sorry, uh, uh, our, our Section eight director, Section eight director?
Yes.
How is she paid?
Through the general fund. Through the help, from the reimbursement, from the, for the, for the accounting services. That thirty thousand dollars. That's to help pay Miranda, to help to pay Vanessa for her time that she does to make the checks.
Wait, 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 wait a minute.
Of course, for the payroll.
They don't do so that our check is all coming to pay that salary, that's what you pay, they don't get.
No, no, see, see.
No, no, it, it, it's to reimburse the general fund for Miranda's salary and the administrative fees. Uh, the general fund occurs for helping operate the Section eight program.
I'm, 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 no, no, we have not.
Yes, we have actually, yes, we have.
We're talking about the budget, gave me opportunity, I gave everybody a chance to speak, they did. So now, I, I, I'm kind of confused. If, if, by Section eight director. She's paid through the City of Tallulah's funds.
Right.
General funds.
Right.
No reimbursement for Section eight.
The thirty thousand dollars is part of reimbursement for Section eight?
No, 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 ma'am. She's not paid through no reimbursement for, from Section eight. I'm gonna tell you why I know that. Because interim mayor Lewis wanted to give a raise for that position.
No, I did not.
Oh, my God.
I wanted to give a raise for Section eight.
For, for the director?
I wanted to.
Yes, ma'am.
What about, but it was not?
Oh, I wish Ms. Harris was here. When we was in that meeting, and I told you before, when you said you wanted to give a raise, I, I said, right now when I find out.
Hold on, hold on, I can't, I, I haven't wanted to give any raises, I just came into this position.
Ma'am, and you just.
Four months ago, and I have not said anything about a raise.
You said that, you said that in a meeting that we had.
That I wanted to give a raise?
Yes.
No, sir.
I, I mentioned it.
Absolutely, no, sir.
My, my family, I'm not gonna lie on you.
No, sir.
We was in a, but we was in a budget committee meeting, and when Ms. Harris comes, Lord knows, I pray she give us the honesty, the honest truth. And I told you, I mentioned once before, that I don't think we should be giving any raises out with our financial situation.
That came across the board?
No, it was in our discussion in the budget committee meeting.
I haven't said anything about giving anybody a raise.
You did mention that, and I can't believe you said the same, you didn't.
Okay.
You said that, now.
No, I did not say that.
I promise you, you did.
No, I did not say that.
I, I gave a say.
Okay, I did not say it.
I gave Ms. Harris a say.
I did not say it. Ms. Harris, can you tell me what I said?
I know you didn't deny it, but Ms. Harris was there, and Mr. Odom said to me.
I said?
None of you, you just said, she said.
I have not said anything about giving anybody any raises since I have become interim mayor, point blank, period.
Point blank, period, you're telling the story. You said that in a budget committee, I, I would not lie on you.
No, I did not.
Just like Mr. Scott came to that meeting that night that day, and said somebody sent him, and then I said in the meeting, he said, well, he didn't say that. So it's nothing, it's not for you all to tell the story when y'all get.
Okay.
So now, let's go back to this.
Okay, you got about two more minutes, and then you are going to be done.
So you saying that Ms., our Section eight director is paid from Section eight into general funds? I, I'm trying, I'm trying to understand, we, we, you're saying that so many people.
The City of Tallulah charges Section eight program so much per month for Miranda's salary and other administration costs. And that would be part of running the payroll for Miranda, doing the half payments and checks. All that is for reimbursement, administrative fees, which is a fee.
Okay, let, let me redirect the question. So who is the Section eight director paid? Is it through the City of Tallulah, or is it through Section eight?
I think that question has been answered several times.
Well, we, we, we got a roundabout answer.
We've got a truthful answer, it's paid, the general fund pays your salary, it's reimbursed through the Section eight and then fees.
So the answer to the question, Section eight pays Miranda, but it's just a positive because the general fund and the city right there.
Actually, if you wanna know the truth, I don't think that that thirty thousand covers Miranda's salary. So general fund is always both, if you wanna look at it that way.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has any, um, input at this time?
Yes. Am I recognized?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Now, ma'am, I'd like to know from you, how would you micromanage the budget?
As I said, I did not micromanage the budget, I micromanaged the putting it in the paper and everything so that we could get it correct.
Does that, so you micromanage putting it in the paper, how, why, why does the putting it in the paper need to be micromanaged? Because when you say micromanage, that means?
Because it was done incorrectly several times, and so I wanted to make sure that we get it correct.
So do you think we use the term micromanage out of turn? And the second part of it is that I noticed that Mr. Odom said he prepared the budget, but we only get feedback from one individual, which is Ms. Thompson. And if, if Mr. Odom prepared the budget, why aren't the mayor and the city clerk is answering the questions? Seems like Ms. Thomas know more about this budget, uh, than, than, than you two. And secondly, the original budget you put out is totally a little bit different format than, than you did the, the, the one the other couple of weeks ago. A little bit different than this, what we're seeing. Yeah, so that's, whatever you publish, it should still be here. You know?
That is what we published.
No, ma'am. You, you, you published, okay. You say you published it, fine. Uh, but I think it's quite odd that the, the interim mayor doesn't know how the city's operated financially and supposed to have been a gaming executive. Uh, because numbers is everything in the gaming industry, and we don't know those numbers. And we can't explain that to the city. Now, going back to Ms. Thompson, you mentioned that accounting fees come from water and sewer, two thousand a month? And you mentioned that accounting fees for Section eight, which is twenty-some hundred a month, if you, twenty-four hundred a month, forty-eight thousand? Plus the regular fees, seventy, plus the regular fees of fifty thousand or forty, seventy thousand? Which is nine, over ninety thousand dollars, it doesn't add up for what you're, what you're saying. So I, I'm, I'm kind of.
I understand.
No, I understand, I understand these numbers very well. I probably understand them a little bit more than what you guys put down here on paper. So, uh, and I, and I, I can see the understanding, you guys' understanding in there. Uh, because if it was, we should be able to explain the line items a little bit more in detail. And we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to, uh, compile, uh, different compartments with one another if we were being truthful with the numbers. Uh, we wouldn't have to say accounting or engineering, uh, in this, in the, um, in the department, in, in the recreation department, if there wasn't engineering fees. And I, I remember clearly, uh, that, that project, when it was done, uh, it was done several years back, that was when we first got to COVID. A little bit after we got the COVID money, we used that for that, so that, that engineering fee shouldn't even be in this, this budget, period. Uh, but the mayor, uh, I think she, she'll go back and look at that. Um, it's, it's a lot of fees in here, you know, uh, fire taxes that was raised, I mean, I, I, I'm not understanding that. Uh, how can we definitely, year by year, and I looked at the last three budgets that we had, uh, fire, fire, uh, fire fees? And they increased tremendously. I'm not, I, I, I just don't understand how we project to add another hundred, almost two hundred thousand dollars to fire fees when we hadn't been collecting those fire fees.
Well, I just, I, but I explained, that was my mistake because there was an election, and there was a fire fee, uh, it was gonna be for the parish, and the city was gonna share in it too. I don't remember exactly what the breakdown was and all that. I thought that it was gonna be an addition from what I was reading and hearing, I thought it was gonna be an addition to what we already had, which was about a hundred ten thousand a year from the parish. So I was totally thrilled about that, and I happily put it down on the budget. Only to find out later, after everything had been passed and approved, that no, it was a renewal, it was a renewal, it was not an addition.
Well, I, I think it's, I, I think it's clear to say, uh, Mr. Odom and Ms. Thompson, Thompson, right?
Thompson.
Thompson, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, my apologies. I, I think it's clear to say that even looking at the budget, uh, which, you know, I, I, it's clear to say that the, the city, we, we really in a financial situation, and it, it's, it's gonna be difficult, uh, a little bit difficult to come out of that financial situation.
We're, we're, you're right, we're aware of it.
Yeah, and I know I'm right, uh, by looking at the numbers, we, we in a serious situation, and I don't, I don't think that the interim mayor is capable of, of, I, I apologize, I'm not taking a shot at you, interim mayor. Uh, but it's kind of hard, uh, under the administration, if we are, if we aren't accustomed to doing these types of budgets, uh, and, 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 and doing the things that we need to do in order to correct what we have gotten ourselves into.
I think that we have the people here that are totally and completely capable, and the top of the list would be the mayor.
Well, if, if that's the case, Mr. Odom, we wouldn't be in this situation, because the same people.
No, 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 the water company.
Mister, Mister Odom, Mister Odom, please have a finish, okay?
Yeah, because the reason, the reason I, 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 I say that you're incorrect, because if you are capable of coming out of this mess, you're capable of not getting into the mess. So you don't get yourself.
Listen to what I was saying to you. Mister, Mister Odom, Mister Odom, and, and, hold on just a second, everybody. Mister Odom, Mister Wilson has the floor, Mister Wilson.
Thank you.
Your, your three minutes are, are done, okay, is there anybody else that has any?
I, 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 I.
Mister, your, your three minutes are done. Is there anybody else in the audience that has any public comments? Okay, at this time, we, we have a timer, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reenter the special meeting.
In that, with one question before we do that.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reenter the special meeting.
Before we, uh, before we.
Is there a second?
Now, since you got a motion to second, I have a question before we move forward on the motion.
And you have been given, been given ample time to, for this, no, sir. You have been given ample time on this, uh, tonight, and so now we have, uh, recognized.
We're going to intensively to recognize.
All right, we have a proper motion.
Is the meeting adjourned?
Gerald, please have a seat, okay?
Scott.
Okay. Okay, there's proper motion and second to adjourn the public hearing and reenter the special meeting, all in favor, say aye?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed?
No. Okay.
Now, ma'am, you have to recognize.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the ordinance to approve the municipal budgets for the City of Tallulah for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Now, motion to that effect. I'm sorry, I'm doing twenty-six, it's a time.
You ignored, so I'm gonna be. So now.
Is there, is there, you do not have the floor, Councilman Wells, you have been given enough time, is there a motion to approve and order?
You can't do that.
Councilman Wells. You have, okay.
I raised my hand to be recognized.
And I am telling you.
And you cannot ignore a councilman, ma'am.
Okay, here's, if you would give me a moment, okay, all right, no, we didn't.
Two minutes.
Okay, we are, we are approving the ordinance right now. Once we get the motion and the, hold on just one second. Once we get the motion and the second, then I will give you an opportunity, okay? Is there a proper motion to approve this ordinance? The, the public hearing is over, okay? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance to approve the municipal budgets for the City of Tallulah for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six? Motion that we approve the minimum budget? Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Now, before the, uh, this one, sweet, so before we approve this budget, okay? I wanna make sure, now according to the budget statement, it says the budget right now is three million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars for coming fiscal year. It doesn't say five million. So that, that's not in your budget statement, am I correct? Am, am I correct?
Different sums.
Is it not in, according, what you published? In the budget statement was three million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, is that correct?
That's the total charges to appropriation.
So, so there's, there's no other expenditures listed? So if, my question is, if we have five million some dollars, why is it not listed in your budget statement?
Well, we're talking about a net worth situation, and, and that's more than just.
As a matter of record, on the record, we said three million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, let's vote.
We have a proper motion and a second, Gerald, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, what did you say earlier?
We have a roll call, voting out for the approval of the ordinance, of the budget ordinance. We have a proper motion and a second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, roll call, Wells?
No.
Day?
Yes.
Harris?
Have some.
Day, uh, Houston?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public comments, do we have any public comments? Yes, sir.
Now, my next question comes to the budget, when is the budget going to affect? When is it going to affect?
Right now, right now.
It's gonna affect after we vote, right? As of right now. So Ms. Thompson, by law, since the only thing that we published is this three million and seven hundred some thousand dollars in our budget statement, is that all that we have at our disposal? Public.
That's strictly general fund.
I had no idea, I have no message.
So, 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 so i- is the City of Tallulah governed by this budget message?
No.
It's not?
No.
The budget statement ain't, ain't governed by the, the state wasn't here?
It's under the budget itself.
It should be pointed out that that is strictly general fund.
I know, and also, I, I didn't say that.
And that's expenditure, as in, I don't, I don't agree that I don't know.
I got you, I got you, my next question.
It's general fund.
And also the budget message supposed to include the special revenue funds too? That's not including the budget message?
I mentioned, I mentioned.
No, no, it, it, it's supposed to have to begin back in your budget message, it's not in there. So now, I'm just making sure I go on matter of record. How, how much money, uh, do we have in revenues for the budget?
Okay, we're under public comments now?
I'm, I'm going public comment.
No, no, we have finished the budget item. We are done with that, we've had a public hearing, we had ample opportunity, so if there is a public comment.
Budget is affected as of now.
If there is a public comment that you have, sir, you can say that now, if not, is there anyone else in the audience who has any public comments?
I'm trying to say something, you said, go ahead, don't say something else, you said you top it off. So is the budget affected as of this moment?
If you're trying to catch me up.
No, no, it's, it's just yes or no, yes. Are, are all the expenditures in revenue, this is the budget.
If it appears that it is, I'll say that.
I will know.
Okay, so there is public comments, if not, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.